Bathroom's okay. And you get him. I'll follow you. Like a kitchen.
Good evening. It is Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and it is six oh two P M. Um, Madam Clerk, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can you take the roll, please?
Brayden?
Here.
Pew?
Here.
McBride? No. Little?
Here.
Ace on the face.
Livingston?
Here.
Teresa?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Aline?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, thank you. Uh, please let the record reflect that Ms. Newton did notify me in advance of this meeting, uh, for her to attend virtually, per council rules. Uh, next item on the agenda is our invocation, and tonight Administrator Leonardo Brown will lead us in prayer.
Please join me. Most merciful and kind Father, we thank you for an opportunity to gather here tonight to take care of the business of Richland County. Thank you for the men and women who have been elected to serve, given them the heart, the mind, and the wisdom to carry out your work. The only father through their actions in serving our community. We thank you for all of those who will serve in a public service, and we thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you have provided to each and every one of us here. During this season, the heavenly Father of illness with a lot of our members in Richland County catching the flu, keep them safe, keep their families safe, help them return to a portion of health and strength that will allow them to come back out again and serve here in Richland County. We thank you, the heavenly Father, for those who have gathered here this evening to honor our council, our county, uh, family member, uh, Attorney McLean. Lord, we just pray that you will continue to give them the strength that they need to go forth in these next days and these next years. Lord, again, we just thank you for your blessings and pray that you continue to keep your arms around Richland County and the service that we provide. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
... To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation of resolution. We have, uh, four A, a resolution recognizing the life and legacy of Richland County Chief Deputy County Attorney Elizabeth McLean. Do you want to take the book? All right, I'll entertain.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk.
Brayden?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Question approved.
Thank you. Whereas Elizabeth Beth McLean is a beloved member of our Richland County family, is being and is being honored for her distinguished twenty-five years of service and dedication to Richland County. Elizabeth was lost to us on January tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Elizabeth was born to John Michael McLean and the late Wanda June Rivers McLean. Following her graduation from the University of South Carolina in nineteen ninety-six, Elizabeth earned her Juris Doctor from the University of South Carolina School of Law in nineteen ninety-nine, and began her legal career that year, serving the citizens of Richland County as a law clerk in the Department of Unsafe Housing Division. Subsequently, joining the county's legal department in two thousand and one, where she held multiple roles of increasing responsibility, which included staff attorney, assistant county attorney, attorney one, deputy county attorney, acting county attorney, and lastly, chief deputy county attorney. Throughout her career, Elizabeth became an astute observer of the operation of government and diplomacy, while garnering the respect and admiration of her colleagues within South Carolina and throughout the legal community. Elizabeth worked with and gave exceptional legal advice to county staff members and was relied upon to liaison with state and local elected and appointed officials, attorneys, and judges on behalf of the county. Elizabeth utilized her skills and knowledge to help guide the county through the COVID-19 pandemic and the myriad of legal issues associated therewith. Professionally, Elizabeth was a consummate leader who unceasingly and unselfishly shared her time, breadth of knowledge, and wisdom with her colleagues. Personally, Elizabeth gave freely of her time voluntarily coaching youth baseball teams, adopting families at Christmas, and at other times in donating her time, talents, and financial resources to help those in need. In addition to her many personal accomplishments achieved throughout her lifetime and professional accomplishments achieved throughout her career, Elizabeth enjoyed playing the trumpet in her middle school, high school, and college marching bands. While in law school, was a peer mentor to first-year law students and humbly gave of herself and her time to youth diversion program participants. Elizabeth also had an angelic singing voice and enjoyed reading, baseball, going to the beach, Disney, and all things Gamecock. Above all, Elizabeth was a devoted and loving mother, spouse, sister, daughter, and friend. Elizabeth leaves a legacy of loyalty, kindness, generosity, and commitment to the citizens of Richland County, as well as to her family, friends, colleagues, and any who were fortunate enough to know her. Now therefore be it resolved, Richland County Council Members Jason Branham, Derek Pew, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Don Weaver, Gretchen Barron, Tish Dozier-Aline, Jessica Mackey, Shaquise Nguyen, and Cheryl English, recognize and honor Richland County Chief Deputy Attorney Elizabeth McLean for her outstanding contributions to the legal profession and for her twenty-five years of dedication and excellent service to Richland County, South Carolina. I would like to, uh, take a brief moment to acknowledge our county attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to take a moment to just say that when I first got here as county attorney, uh, we, as the legal department, the county attorney's office, has operated as a family. At first, I got here in November, that first Christmas in December, I can remember Elizabeth playing a recording of her and her sister and her mother singing, which I was surprised because I didn't know she had that talent. So, um, and, you know, it was amazing, uh, the voices that they had. And from the time I've gotten here, I got here till now, we made sure to take the time to honor each other on, on our birthdays, holidays, to recognize, uh, no insignificant events happen, uh, with the families, and so we are a legal department, but more importantly, we are a family. And on behalf of the legal family, I do want to offer this plaque in honor and memory of Elizabeth McLean's commitment and dedication to Richland County nineteen ninety-nine to twenty twenty-five. We would, I would like to present this to the family on behalf of the entire legal department. And I would also, uh, like to make a, an announcement. Really, for the past couple of years, I've talked about, uh, naming our legal conference room, and so I think this is the right time to do it. And in representing the, the spirit of Elizabeth, I think that she would be happy to, to, to know this, and this is also to honor Elizabeth, as well as a special unit, uh, the three sixty-ninth Infantry, uh, Regiment of World War One, the Great War, the first all-black U.S. combat unit to be shipped overseas, who trained actually here in Spartanburg, South Carolina. But they were sent to fight with the French Army, uh, since they couldn't fight with the U.S. regiment. The Germans dubbed the unit the Hellfighters, uh, because in a hundred and ninety-one days of duty at the front, they never had any men captured, no ground taken. As a matter of fact, one, Henry Johnson, twenty-five years old, uh, single-handedly fought off thirty-six German soldiers, using grenades to butter his rifle, a bolo knife, and his bare fists, saving and rescuing his fellow soldiers. And they received the Quat de Guerre, the Cross of War, from the French government, and also the Purple Heart from Miss Bill Clinton in nineteen ninety-six, and the Medal of Honor from President Barack Obama in twenty fifteen. And to honor Elizabeth and her spirit and pay homage to this storied fighting unit, the legal conference room will be officially named the Elizabeth McLean Hellfighter Conference Room.
Thank you, Attorney Wright. If I could say a few words, um, I am, you know, relatively speaking now, but I'm a newer council member compared to how long I was with the county. And coming in, you know, she was, of course, the first attorney we met, because at that time, um, Larry Smith was gone, and so she was the first one that, uh, me and many of the new council members, uh, worked with and was always there to answer all of my questions, because as a new council member, we had a lot of questions. And so she was always there to answer questions, but one of the things I can say I remember and enjoy most is that our conversations that we would have as mothers. She had her Oliver and I had my Olivia, and so we would always talk about, well, how's Oliver, what is he doing, and, you know, what is Olivia doing? And those were our best conversations, because we weren't councilwoman or county attorney. It was just two moms talking about how we trying to do all this in life and raise kids and keep up with it all. And so I know that she loved her Oliver so, so much. And so we are grateful for her service here, and please know we are sending our love to you all. Thank you.
I've had the pleasure to, um, to serve on county council during the entire time Elizabeth was here, and I could be the one to tell you that I, there's not anyone that's been more dedicated, committed, and loved Richland County as much as she did. She always stepped up, uh, at times in need. When I was, attorney was out for long-term illness, she stepped right in and took, and held the job. Uh, when our attorney retired, she stepped in and made sure the county ran where it should. And when she, you know, you know, what I really liked about Elizabeth now, when Elizabeth give us an opinion about something, she wouldn't just give you the opinion, she's very specific. She would go, here's the statute, here's the provision, here's the law, you know, like we lawyers or something, you know? But, but you knew she knew what she was talking about, because she, like I said, stated all those things, and what was fascinating about it, half the time she wasn't looking at anything, reading from anywhere. That's how intelligent and brave she was and what she meant, uh, meant to us. I, I know we'll miss her, um, but we won't miss the commitment and dedication, what she's done for our county. So I'm, I'm just sawing it, um, for us to do what we've done on her behalf tonight.
Recognize.
So I, I would say that, you know, to know Elizabeth is really, um, a joy, because, uh, like Elizabeth, I, I enjoy laughing and oftentimes get called sarcastic. And so to know that about Elizabeth, I remember I came home with a, a chair, and when we sat in here in the chambers, it was during COVID, and, um, we were taking a break, and I had a question about, you know, something that she had just presented, and she says, well, if that's what you, if that's your opinion, then okay, let's go with it. You know, and I was like, okay. And then later on, I was like, well, what's wrong with this lady? You know, I asked you a direct question, and she's like, no, you just do it. If that's what you want to do, do it. And, and then later on, we became, um, our relationship developed, because we, we centered around the mighty Gamecocks. And so, you know, there's not a whole lot you can say, uh, negative about the mighty Gamecocks, and, and then we had more conversation about loafers, uh, because I, I'm a big loafer fan, but what, what I think the most, um, important thing that I took away from Elizabeth was, I was a chair of the Coronavirus Ad-Hoc Committee, and that was a, a very difficult time, and she was the acting county attorney at the time, and we spent a lot of times just really trying to figure out navigating the waters of this difficult time, and then we got eighty, you know, eighty million dollars to go along with it, and what will we do with it? And I said, well, I think we should, you know, try to give it to the community. And she says, well, Councilwoman Barron, you can do that, but it's gonna be difficult. I said, can you figure out how we can do it? She says, oh, yeah, I can do that, I'll have it to you tomorrow. And that was her attitude about everything. It was, we're gonna get it done, and we're gonna, we're gonna get it done quickly, and if I couldn't get it, if she couldn't get it done quickly, then she was coming back and saying, I didn't do it, but I'll tell you why I didn't do it, and this is what the plan is. And I think there's so much that can be learned from an individual like her, and she's, she's greatly missed and will greatly be missed, but I think that, you know, noting that anytime we can go in the, into, you know, the office with our legal team, that will have now have that memory, uh, of her in that conference room is, is one of the greatest things. So to the county attorney, thank you for doing that in her honor.
Ms. Newton, um, online, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry that I couldn't be physically present today, and you've heard us share a lot of great things about Elizabeth, and she was so knowledgeable and so passionate about making a difference and doing the right thing and making things better for our community. That's, I, I want to say it's the number one thing that I'll remember about her, but it's probably tied by the fact that I considered Elizabeth a friend, and we would text and talk about books and about cooking, and with her trademark sass, if she felt like I didn't compliment how hard she had worked on a particular pastry, she'd always get back to me just to let me know how good it was and how much she had worked on it. But she will, will definitely be missed, and I think it was really a pleasure to know her and a pleasure to share part of the time with her. And like Ms. Mackey mentioned, we really, we, we talked a lot about food, but we also talked a lot about family and just how very much she loved you all, and I just am so glad that we had a chance to get to know her and share her at the county, so thank you.
Thank you. If we invite you all to please join us at the seal, um, to receive the resolution in her honor.
Everybody see me okay here? Y'all in the back, y'all can move into the spot here if you need to. There you go. Yeah, that's good, that's good. Yeah. Brad, you come. And I'm, yeah, that'll be good. Seen her already. Everybody see me okay here? Y'all in the back, y'all can move into the spot here if you need to. There you go. Yeah, that's good, that's good. Yeah. Brad, you come. Yeah, that'll be good. Seen her already. Brad, if you want to come right there, that gap right there, that would be good. There you go. Now we can see everyone. All right. Keep shooting here. All right. Very good.
Madam Chair, just one more thing. I see, uh, former H R Director Hannah, uh, is present, and H R has their civility conference room. Now we have our Elizabeth McLean Hellfighter Conference Room.
Here you go. Good to see you, Director Hannah.
Thank you.
Yes, if, I would like to say.
Hi, um, counsel, thank you so much. The family would like to just extend, um, appreciation, gratitude for for the recognition of a lifelong, uh, commitment to the county from Elizabeth. Work is work, but it was more than work to her, and I hope that that came through, and as a family, we greatly appreciate this, uh, this effort and recognition. So thank you very much.
Our next item this evening is four B, which is a resolution recognizing the twentieth and grand finale of the statewide Black History Festival. Motion?
Okay.
Ten second.
Brayden?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Question approved.
Thank you. Whereas Black History Month, sorry, I'll wait just a minute. No, go right ahead. No, you guys are fine. Whereas Black History Month began as Negro History Week in February nineteen twenty-six by historian Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. This week was chosen because it coincided with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and President Abraham Lincoln. In nineteen sixty-nine, Black History Month was proposed by black educators and black United students at Kent State University, with the first celebration taking place a year later. President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month during the United States' bicentennial, urging Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Funds Incorporated, which stands for Friends United as a Neighborhood Developmental Society Incorporated, was founded in South Carolina on October seventh, nineteen ninety-seven, and has since hosted an annual statewide Black History Parade and Festival. Its mission is to revisit history, tell history, and bring history to a live experience through education, through entertainment. and bring history to a live experience through education, through entertainment. Two thousand twenty-five marks the twentieth anniversary and grand finale of the statewide Black History Parade and Festival in Columbia, South Carolina. This milestone event celebrates two decades of honoring black heritage, educating communities, and fostering cultural unity. The parade and festival has served as a beacon of history and pride, bringing together thousands to commemorate the achievements and resilience of African-Americans. This grand finale event will not only recognize past accomplishments, but will also leave a lasting impact on future generations by solidifying the importance of celebrating black history through community engagement and shared experiences. Now therefore be it resolved that the Richland County Council members, Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Terracio, Don Weaver, Gretchen Barron, Tish Aline, Jessica Mackey, Shaquise Newton, and Cheryl English proudly recognize and commends the twentieth anniversary and grand finale of the statewide Black History Parade and Festival for its invaluable contributions to the preservation and celebration of black history and culture. The council expresses its deep appreciation for the tireless efforts of Funds Incorporated in making this event a longstanding success and ensuring that the legacy and contributions of African-Americans continue to be honored and celebrated in South Carolina and beyond. Want to make sure we personally recognize Ms. Ovita Glover, the founder of Funds Incorporated, the founder and vision behind our Black History Month Parade and Festival. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please, come on down. You gotta say a few words, you here.
I just want to say truly surprised, and I appreciate all of you for giving me these surprises today. And all of you that have not been.
Aight.
To get there, because this is the grand finale. And all of you usually participate, Allison. Participate, I can call the names, go down the road. So I'm expecting to see you on the twenty-second of February. We line up right here. When I say surprise, y'all, I'm very surprised, and I'd love the honor as well. Uh, quite a few people are asking why the grand finale. And I'm gonna be honest, it's because I'm tired. It's a lot of work, it's just not calling you and begging or whatever. But, uh, you know, you have to deal with all types of personalities. And, um, I'm that person that loves to deal with personality, but I'm a little worn. So I'm gonna give it up and try to pass it on to someone else. So if you're familiar with anyone that may want to move this, please let me know as soon as possible. Um, Jason, I'm looking to see you.
Oh, amen.
I really have, I would like to see all of you participate. And, and I'm not just calling you to pick on you, but I really would like to see all of you there. The, the purpose of getting you all there along with city council and others is to show the unity of all of the entities here in Columbia, South Carolina. And believe it or not, most of the people that attended are from out of the city of. So that's a good thing. The county people are coming in to see what's going on. And I hate I hadn't begged for money from you earlier, earlier, early on, but it didn't see the necess- the necess- necessity of it at the time, because I wanted you to get indulged in it and see what it needed. So the next person that takes it on you'll know that it needs the assistance of. So I'm going to ask all of you, as I take pictures, to rise and come take a picture with me as well, if that can happen.
Yes ma'am, if you can.
Thank you.
Over to the seal.
Move to the seal. My sister's here as well, her name is Gail Glover. You'll be hearing that name if you have my name.
Yeah, I think we can see him. If he could come forward into that pocket right there.
Tell him to come close.
Can, can Miss Aline come forward some?
Forward or?
Or somewhere, I...
So what about in between, what about in between the?
Yeah, there we go.
Yep, right there.
That's good. Yeah, we can see everyone else.
Okay.
All right. Folks are right here. That's good. I'm just gonna get one more here, y'all. That's good, right there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Glover, we appreciate you. Yes ma'am, one o'clock, February twenty-second. We'll make sure to spread the word. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, a regular session, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm two.
You recognize?
I'm two approve.
The motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do you have any changes?
No recommended changes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion is second for the adoption of agenda. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is the report of the Attorney for Executive Session Items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we have two items for executive session. Uh, seven A, Project Connect Property Update pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two and A five. Seven B, Property Inquiry, Capital Projects, Columbia Place Mall pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. And we do not have any outside counsel for either matter.
Thank you. Per council rules, both items will be taken up at our second executive session item in our agenda. Next is item nine, Citizens Input. Must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Sheriff Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up this evening?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
I apologize, I asked, I skipped item eight. Citizens input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing for item eight. Did anyone sign up for item eight?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you so much. Next is item ten, Report of the County Administrator. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, I want to give you a brief update on a couple of items. Uh, the first item deals with, um, the NACO Counties for Housing Solutions in the packet, I believe you're showing on page thirteen. NACO has open applications for counties for housing solutions, C four H S. The program offers free three-month technical assistance sprints to address the housing affordability challenge by helping counties increase local housing supply. In partnership with Smart Growth America, these sprints are designed to high, to be high intensity and the implementation focused, and will draw upon recommendations made by NACO's twenty twenty-three Housing Task Force. So, um, the reason why I'm bringing this to your attention uh, is because Richland County received, uh, a request to participate uh, in this particular, uh, effort. And a part of this is a process where, uh, it involves, uh, staff and other folks. And at the end of it, is designed to really kind of give you the ability to kind of move forward with, um, uh, an affordable housing-related project. So, the deadline is February twenty-eighth. The thought behind the team is, uh, even though we don't necessarily have like all the pieces together and it is, uh, time-intensive, that going through the process sometimes will make sure that you're ready for any future opportunities. So for whatever reason our application is not accepted, um, then maybe we'll be next, ready for the next time. Uh, the main focus is to continue to move forward with what this council has seen as a priority in addressing potential affordable housing options. So that's why we're looking to apply for this, uh, particular program so that we can come away with potential, uh, opportunities for us to engage in, uh, affordable housing solutions for Richland County. So I wanted to let you know about it. Doesn't really require any action of council at this time necessarily, uh, but wanted to let you know that we were looking to, again, affect the movement of affordable housing in Richland County by participating in this NACO program. So certainly would take any questions that you, you may have about that, but really wanted to let you know, uh, we were gonna try to take every opportunity that we can to move forward. What we understand is the charge to address affordable housing, uh, at the Richland County level.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. We appreciate the efforts of, of you and staff. That is, uh, a priority in our strategic plan. Not only the affordable housing, but also the identification of grants and other opportunities to assist us in being able to accomplish goals. So thank you on both fronts for doing that. You recognize?
Just wanted to ask if, uh, the administrator needs any action from council or this is just an update?
It's an update.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just an update, thank you. Uh, in addition to just the conversation about affordable housing for, uh, just a general update for you, wait, I'm sorry, were there additional questions?
No.
Okay. Um, I wanted to let you know that we did, uh, the post, uh, and RFQ uh, for our affordable housing efforts. So it's, I, I want to let you know if you go to the county's website, go under the procurement and contracting for anyone who's interested, you will see R C dash six nine six dash Q dash two five, Affordable Housing. So that is listed currently on our solicitations, uh, for affordable housing. Uh, that open date is February tenth, twenty twenty-five, and it's gonna run through the closed date of March twelfth. Uh, and this RFQ specifically seeks qualifications and proposals from entities operating existing affordable housing programs in the unincorporated Richland County. So we talked about making sure that we do a good job of letting folks know when we were gonna go through this process. So we're looking at this, again, as another opportunity to deal with the funding that Richland County set aside to address affordable housing. So again, that's all part of the process of moving forward with, again, the initiatives that this council has put forth. So again, doesn't require any council action. Just wanted you to know, uh, that there is movement, uh, on additional, uh, options associated with our, our initiative for affordable housing. So we're, again, we'll take any questions, but again, that item does not take, uh, any action of council. Okay? Hearing no questions. The other update I want to provide you, if you look in your, your packet, um, I just put a little, a notice on there that the policy positions for SEAC are available online. So if you didn't get a hard book packet from SEAC, you can go online, uh, you should be getting emails from them, and you can take a look at what the Association of Counties put as a policy positions for this year. Some of those items in there that we've talked about do align with what Richland County sees as important. So as we go into this legislative session with the General Assembly, certainly want you to just to remember to take a look at those things, and it may require, uh, action from, uh, you as council members to share, uh, your concerns with your, uh, elected representatives, uh, so you can affect, uh, any legislative decision that they may make. So I wanted to, uh, just bring that to your attention as well. Uh, the next item I want to share with you, again, is an update on our comprehensive plan. Uh, we've been talking about this, um, week after week, and we, we, again, wanted to provide you just in your documentation, just a list of the ongoing work, uh, that Community Planning and Development is doing. Again, does not take any specific action, but one, one of the things that we learned from the land development code process is the more consistently we communicate, the more we involve the general public in what's going on, and the more that we inform them how often and when we're doing these things, the better engaged they can be so that they can help inform you and you can help inform us. So again, this is just something that we're gonna continue to keep in front of you, continue to keep in front of the public through the agenda packet as well as through the public meetings, is that we're continuously going through this process, and we want to hear from the community along the way so that when we get to the end, no one is shocked or feel like they were left out or their voices were not heard. So again, certainly want to champion, uh, this communication, and certainly want to just say thank you to the communications that our Community Planning Development Department has done in going out to these various meetings. And again, we encourage you, if there are meetings in your areas that have not been held, where people have reached out to you, let us know, we don't want to leave anybody out. So wanted to share that information with you as well. Uh, the next item on the agenda, under the administrator's report, uh, is an item, uh, that does take action. Uh, it is associated with the, uh, operational services, uh, for the Public Safety uh, Center Waterline Detransfer, that's that item. So Richland County Operational Services recommends approval of the transfer of deeds of the water lines to the City of Columbia, uh, as described in the attached deed to water lines for Richland County Public Safety Center. Uh, and this is a requirement, the, uh, City of Columbia, uh, has a regulatory compliance component that, uh, makes this, uh, a necessary endeavor. And so we are asking you to, uh, approve that so that we can transfer those water lines, which are necessary, so that then we could then, once we, uh, operate that facility, uh, we can do so in compliance with the City of Columbia's regulations. So that, uh, does take, uh, an action from council, so I'm requesting approval, uh, and reconsideration if that item is approved.
You've heard the recommendation, Administrator Brown?
Brown.
I'm sorry, I was reminded. This would actually require, um, this is an order, so it's gonna require three readings, uh, and a public hearing. So my, my apologies. So again, want you to approve it, but you can't reconsider it because it does require three readings.
Hope to approve.
I can.
The motion is second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Thank you. Administrator Brown?
Thank you, I know that was, was pretty quick. Certainly take any questions you have, but that would conclude my report.
Madam Chair, who recognizes me? Uh, I don't have a question, but I do want to take an opportunity to recognize, um, Director William, Williams in her efforts to, uh, really make sure that our community and the constituents of Richland County are fully aware of the changes that are, are to come. She's been out in the community. I made a recommendation several meetings ago, and, um, I'm just happy to see the results of the community engagement. And just hearing back from some, some of my constituents last week, they actually asked, why didn't you ask that lady to come to, to our town hall? And, 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 and my colleague told me to ask you. Uh, so, uh, I just want to tell you, uh, thank you for, um, getting out in the community because it does, uh, go a long way, uh, for districts that, uh, don't live close to downtown. But when we, what I believe is that when we take services to our community and to the communities that we serve, we have better results and, and the engagement is greater. So thank you so much, and I will be calling you, um, for another community meeting.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Next item on the agenda is a report of the Clerk of Council, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a couple of town hall meetings coming up. And District Seven does have a rezoning town hall meeting scheduled for February the thirteenth from six to seven thirty at Killian Park. As well as District Ten is going to host three town hall meetings. Two are gonna be community, uh, information meetings on February the twentieth and the twenty-seventh. On February the twentieth, it will take place at Hopkins Park. And on February twenty-fourth, District Ten will hold a town hall meeting to discuss potential rezonings. On February the twenty-seventh, it will hold another rezoning, I'm sorry, it will hold another town hall meeting at Bluff Road Park to talk about, uh, county... at Bluff Road Park to talk about uh county updates. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Confirmation. I thought that we voted on the Administrator's item, but I'm hearing that there was concerns?
We did.
We voted. So, yes. And so your comment I thought was just additional commentary. Okay.
In a moment, I didn't real remember.
Yeah, we voted before you talked. All right. Next is No ma'am. Everybody questioned, but I remembered. I just wanted to make sure that we all agree what we voted on. All right, next is item twelve, uh Report of the Chair. Um, I wanted to uh make an announcement related to our last meeting item. Uh, our last public meeting, we had a motion period related to a motion that Ms. Little uh submitted. And at that time, I sent it to our Development Services Committee. I was informed afterwards that that actual motion should go to our Administration and Finance Committee. So I'm stating it publicly that that motion uh that Ms. Little submitted related to hate crime legislation will go to our Administration and Finance Committee. That concludes the report of the Chair. Next is item thirteen, Approval Consent Items.
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Hope to approve items thirteen A, B, and C.
A motion is second for approval of thirteen A, B, and C. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Those are our third reading items.
Hope to reconsider?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration, and I'm assuming that motion is for thirteen A, B, and C? To the maker of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
Little?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Aline?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is item fourteen A, An Ordnance Amending the Tourism Development and Accommodation Tax Funds in the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Budget Ordinance Number Zero One Eight Dash Two Four H R of Richland County, South Carolina. I entertain a motion.
Hope to approve.
Second.
A motion is second for approval. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Real quick, um, so will we have a a draft ordinance before the third reading? Or is that what's in the packet right now?
Yeah, you definitely, I think it should be in the packet cuz you should have, you should have it. Should have had it the second reading, but definitely by third reading, you have to have it.
This is off of the Chair's motion, is that right?
Yeah, so this is related to a motion that I made that was approved by the body uh to look at using up to fifteen percent of our accommodation tax money for down payment assistance for Richland County employees, EMS, and school teachers. And this is following an update that was made by South Carolina uh state legislation.
I might have just missed it, but I was just looking for that specific language that you just referenced in the draft.
Uh, this is a budget amendment, so I'm not sure that my actual language ties to the budget amendment of how we spend the money.
We already
We voted on the language, yes, but this is the amendment to reflect the spending of those dollars.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fourteen B, Authorizing the Grant of an Option to Acquire Certain Real Property Owned by Richland County, South Carolina to Mark Anthony Brewing Incorporated, authorizing the transfer of such real property on the exercise of the option by Mark Anthony Brewing Incorporated and the satisfaction of certain conditions as set forth in the option agreement and other matters related thereto.
Second.
Second for approval and
Uh, Madam Chair?
Recognize Mr. Ray?
We just get a a really quick explanation about this item.
Sure. Is that, was it you, Mr. Livingston? Thank you so much.
Part of the county's incentive to uh Mark Anthony Brewing in two thousand twenty, the county provided an additional sixty-three acres condition to the company investing in property. Um, Mark Anthony Brewing never developed the property and and during the time period. So right now, we just, uh, the committee disagreed to extend that period uh to allow them to move forward with the with with the with the um property. If they, and that's only if they invest uh some hundred fifty million dollars in in the property as they said.
Thank you.
Welcome. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fourteen C, Authorizing the Expansion of the Boundaries of the I Seventy Seven Corridor Regional Industrial Park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution, delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Killian Woods Development LLC and other related matters.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Mr. Teresa?
Thank you. Uh, could we just uh be reminded which district this is in? This is
And that would be District Seven? Can we get staff to confirm that?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you. District Seven, Mr. Teresa. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fifteen, Report of the Economic Development Committee.
Madam Chair, item fifteen A, Resolution to Approve an Assignment um to Twenty Two Twenty Two LLC of All Rights and Enters and Obligations of um Twenty Two Twenty Two um Maine LLC. This is a resolution authorizing the um transfer of agreement um since um twenty twenty. That's the old G property. We actually had an agreement on empty with properties. We're now just simply transferring that to another um individual with the same term and conditions, and the committee's recommendation was for approval.
You've heard uh the committee's recommendation, does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Resolution clarifying the all these properties Robert's or Boulevard, um, that's located. Recommendation is
You've heard the committee's uh recommendation, does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Next is item sixteen, Report of the Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. Uh, the Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee held their first meeting uh today uh for two thousand twenty-five. Um, item sixteen A, Mapping the Future Update. If you look in your packet, beginning on page uh one ninety-three, there is a informational briefing from staff that recaps items that we uh discussed at our Strategic Planning Forum last month and calls out key areas and priorities of focus for this year, specifically on um pages one ninety-three to one ninety-five. Uh, the committee made a recommendation today to move forward with these items contained in the report as our priority items and focus for this year. For the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Um, next is item sixteen B, the Hospitality Tax Fund Overview. Uh, this item is uh really just for more information. Um, if you also look in your uh packet on page two eleven, this is a follow-up to the discussion that we had at our Strategic Planning Forum as it related to uh recreational tourism. At that time, staff gave us uh update on financials and where we stand, but was not able to provide a current report on our hospitality tax fund uh balance. So this report gives an update on where we are currently and a look back at uh past hospitality tax fund balance so that we know uh where we stand as we look to uh consider options for recreational tourism. This item was for information only. That concludes the report of Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. I'm sorry, unless anybody had questions related to hospitality tax. All right, that concludes the report of Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. Next is item seventeen, Other Items? You recognize?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items seventeen A through D.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second for seventeen A through D? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'd like to make a motion to the item seventeen A through D.
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
Little?
No.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Aline?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English? Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next is item eighteen, Executive Session. Attorney Wright, you recognize?
Yes, this, the two items in seven. A, uh, Project Connect Property Update and Project B, Project In- Inquiry Capital Projects Columbia Place Mall.
Second.
Thank you. I received a motion and a second to go into Executive Session to set, uh, to, excuse me, to discuss items seven A and B. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're going to Executive Session.
What else?
Entertaining most of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron. Aline.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
I like the, give me just one minute. I like the record to reflect that we went into executive session to discuss items seven A and B, and no action was taken. Councilwoman Baron, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion in reference to seven B. And that is to authorize the county administrator to negotiate as the property as discussed in executive session.
Second. A motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Aline.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
I abstain since I wasn't present for the discussion.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item nineteen. Motion period. I did not receive any motions this evening. And can you just scroll and make sure? I'll make sure I'm looking at the most recent agenda, please. All right. Next is item twenty. Adjournment. Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second for adjournment, Madam Clerk.
Brenham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Aline.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes?